Regularly scheduled meeting of the City of Kettering Planning Commission for July 21st, 2025. I would like to take this opportunity to thank the Miami Valley Cable Council for televising and taping tonight's meeting for rebroadcast on Channel 6 and streaming live over the Internet at M V C C dot net. It will also be recorded and available for later viewing on M B C C dot net. Since this meeting is both audio and video taped to form a complete record for possible appeals to City Council and/or the courts, it is important that anyone who wishes to address the commission will need to come to the lectern to speak into the microphone, give their name and address for the record. The Planning Commission is a volunteer independent body appointed by council whose mission it is to hear all bodies involved and subsequently make a motion to approve, deny, continue, or recommend the application. All actions of the commission can be appealed to City Council. My name is Carol Fisher and I'm the Secretary of the Planning Commission and I would like to introduce Ken Lackey to my left who is the Assistant Secretary and to my right is Don Rethmann, a Planning Commission member. Tonight, our Planning Commission Chairman and Vice Chairman both have excused absences and in that regard, we will need to elect a Chairman pro tempore. And at this point, I would like to nominate Don Rethmann as Chairman.
Second.
Second.
I have a second. All in favor, may I hear aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Don, it's all yours.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Continuing on with introductions, staff present this evening, Ryan Hamsey, who is our City Planner. First item on the agenda for this evening is the approval of the minutes of July 7th, 2025. Did anyone have any comments on the minutes as presented?
None.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Great. Do you want to call individual names or do you want to voice acclamation?
I can call individual names, just stay consistent.
Mr. Hamsey.
Ms. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Lackey.
Yes.
And Mr. Rethmann.
Yes. All right, I guess sort of a point of order here since we are just three tonight, basically this is our quorum and any action by a quorum would need to be unanimous. So it would either be 304, 30 against, if there's a 2, 1, or a 1, 2 vote, basically that means that that motion or recommendation would fail. So with that, we'll move on to the next item, which is new business. It is zoning text amendments to modify various sections of the zoning code. It is P C dash 25 dash 008. Mr. Hamsey, you have a presentation for us.
Thank you, Chairman. Good evening. I want to take the opportunity tonight to go over some of the proposed changes to the zoning code. The recommendation is that this case be continued. And I think everyone here has been through hearings and meetings where we recommend changes to the zoning code. Can be very boring and very difficult to present, so please, if there's any questions or anyone needs any clarification, please interrupt me. I'll try to move through the items as quickly as I can, but again, it's going to be fairly dry no matter what because we're dealing with the zoning code. But a lot of these changes, we've already talked about, some are new and I'll explain the justifications for them as we go. So, and the presentation will go chapter by chapter. So Chapter 1135 of the zoning code, this is the chapter that establishes the zoning districts that we have throughout town. One item that we've talked about, and this was actually recommended as a part of a prior planning process in the city. Right now, we don't have a neighborhood business district, so this amendment would create the neighborhood business district, which is essentially the office district plus non-automobile-oriented commercial uses. And the need for this district became more and more apparent the longer that we looked at our economic development overlays and how we want to rezone those over time. There's a lot of them that are on like the Wilmington Corridor and other areas where neighborhood business would work just fine, but we probably don't want a more intense business district and right now, we don't have a zoning district that just has the non-automobile-oriented uses. The next section to that chapter is the permitted use table. Several changes to this table, most of them are pretty minor. The first one is it adds the neighborhood business district. About a year ago, staff gave a couple presentations to City Council about short-term rentals and like Airbnbs and Verbos and things of that nature to get their feedback on how they would like us to either regulate them or not regulate them. Based on those meetings, we were directed to draft language that would essentially permit them on a pretty simple basis to get approved. And this ordinance would implement what council requested that we include in the zoning code for short-term rentals. Going along with the establishment of the neighborhood business district, we have to split our restaurant use into a couple different categories, one that has like drive-through and drive-in facilities and one that's more dine-in, carry-out restaurants. That's for the purpose of having the neighborhood business district work a little better. Right now, microbreweries are in industrial use, which is fine, but one of the issues we have, if these uses butt up to residential, is that they need to have much more intensive buffer yards, even though they function more like a restaurant. So we're proposing to move the microbrewery and brew pub uses into the commercial use group. Another item that we had talked about briefly at a prior meeting, industrial uses operate in a much more clean fashion than they had in the past and we have a lot of big former retail spaces that probably aren't going to fill up again with either employee-dense office uses or they're not going to fill up with a lot of retail uses again. So part of this amendment recommends adding fabrication and industrial crafts and product assembly to the business zoning district. Laboratory uses are already permitted. And another minor change, if anyone, I figured people might ask about this, right now, our zoning code has a use for weapons sales, which is perfectly fine, but if you read the definition, it basically doesn't encompass much of anything because state law prevents local governments from regulating, of course, the sale of firearms, but also the sale of knives. So unless you're coming in to sell slingshots or something of that nature, it's just not a use that we need in the code anymore, so we're proposing to delete that entirely. It's just, we would just consider it a general retail use. Moving on to the next chapter, 1137, which is the chapter of the code that lists the standards for specific uses. There's a lot of changes proposed to this chapter, most of them are pretty minor, but one of the bigger ones is we want to modify our standards for daycare centers to be more consistent with what the state requires. Right now, our zoning code requires that if you have a daycare use, you can only take access from a collector, arterial, or thoroughfare street and not a local street. So the kinder care at the corner of, I believe, Benfield and East Stroop is non-conforming. It doesn't have access to East Stroop, but we don't want them to have access to East Stroop because it functions just fine by getting access off Benfield. So we want to strike that requirement where we want the uses to adjoin those streets, but we want them to be able to take access off the more minor streets to not cause conflicts with traffic. Our code also requires a minimum of 100 square feet of outdoor play area per charge at the daycare center. Well, the state requires 60, so we just want to change that to be more consistent with the state laws. Our code also requires all outdoor play areas to be surrounded with a six-foot-tall privacy fence or a wrought iron fence with an adjoining evergreen hedge, even if it's not adjoining residential uses. And we just want to make it, if you're adjoining a residential use, have a six-foot privacy fence. If it's facing a street or some other use, you can go down to a four-foot open-style fence, kind of like what they have at St. Charles along East David on the northeast side of that property. I believe they got a variance back in the day for having that four-foot fence, but it works just fine and technically our code requires a six-foot privacy fence. Another item that is going along with a change that we made to the code as a part of one of the last amendments we did a few years ago, there's several uses in the zoning code, including a lot of our industrial uses and a lot like gas stations and restaurants, the more intense commercial uses, where if you adjoin a residential use, you're required to have a six-foot-tall finished masonry wall along the edge of the property. My understanding is this has been in the zoning code for a number of decades and since that time, since it was first adopted, there's other alternatives that accomplish the same goal, but cost much less. So we want to eliminate the masonry wall requirement in the standards for specific uses chapter, but then add a section to the buffer yard section of the code, and I'll get into that a little bit later, that basically takes this requirement, modifies it, and puts it in the chapter of the code that makes more sense, makes more sense, which is the buffer yard section of the code. We also have a 10-acre minimum lot size for hospital uses that kind of, it hasn't caused any issues that I'm aware of, but in the jurisdiction I worked before, there was a post-acute medical op, they had 40 beds at the Kettering Health Network facility in Miami'sburg, and they wanted to move off the campus and build a 62-bed hospital across the street. And they built that on about a five-and-a-half acre property. They would not be able to do that in Miami'sburg, or I'm sorry, they would not be able to do that in Kettering because we have this kind of arbitrary 10-acre minimum lot size, we want to get rid of that. And this is kind of more of an item for discussion. Right now, most industrial uses are, if they have outdoor storage areas, they're required to be 150 feet from residential properties, which understandable. The challenge with that is there's no distinction for if you're storing like some pallets that might be four feet tall, they need to be 150 feet from any residential uses. So this draft language recommends keeping the 150-foot separation requirement if what's being stored outside is taller than eight feet, but permitting storage areas if what's being stored outside is eight feet or less to be close to residential uses, but still outside of the buffer yard areas. So those areas would be required to be at least 40 feet from residential properties, but it would give a little bit more flexibility. Any questions so far? None? Okay. Moving on to the accessory structure and use chapter of the code, we're proposing to add a section that clarifies that temporary storage containers cannot be used for accessory storage structures. We talked about this next item at a prior meeting, but right now, in the sheds are defined as a detached storage building, 100 square feet or less. Once you're bigger than that, it's called a roofed enclosed accessory structure and those are subject to stricter architectural standards. What we're proposing now is to slightly increase the size of what can be considered a shed. They would still be required to match the general shape of the house if they're between 101 square feet and 144 square feet, but this would essentially allow residents to have slightly bigger sheds without having to meet our strict architectural standards. Another item that we talked about a while ago, and I have some pictures on a slide coming up, we want to permit uncovered porches on residential properties and we want to permit them to encroach up to eight feet into the required front yard setback, and I have some pictures coming up where I'll explain that in a little bit more detail. Another item, and I have more detailed information coming up in a few slides, we want, our pool security requirements, especially as they relate to the gate standards, are missing some items and it's worded in a little bit of a confusing manner and I'll get into that in a second, and we want to change that. So when it comes to uncovered porches, one of the issues that we have in our code, you're allowed to have a patio in your front yard, which is six inches or less above grade, they can project up to eight feet into the required setback, into the required front yard setback, and they don't have to be covered by a roof structure. So the picture on the screen now, that's a patio. If this were a house where the front door is higher than six inches, they wouldn't be able to do it because once you're higher than six inches above grade, it's considered something different. And to meet the definition of a porch, you would need to build a roof structure over it that matches the architecture of the house, which is very expensive. And we want to allow residents to, like, kind of like what the house on the right has, we want them to be able to have essentially a patio in front of their house that's a little, that's higher than six inches above grade. So the pool barrier requirements, right now, this is, there's other standards, but these are the general standards. You have to have a six-foot-tall barrier. Such fence, wall, or other pool barrier shall be of a design and construction as to effectively prevent a child from crawling or otherwise passing through or under such a barrier. And rails are not permitted in place of a wall or fence. And then also such fence or other pool barrier, and each gate therein shall be self-closing with a self-latching secure lock. And the confusing part is right here, the latch shall be not lower than 48 inches above grade, or from grade. And I think the word or is missing after the word grade, but it also says the latch shall be located on the inside of the gate, not accessible to small children. So the way our code's written today, it's required to be 48 inches above grade and on the inside of the gate. So if you have a six-foot privacy fence, I could reach over and open it, but the way this is written, again, I think the word or is missing, but you wouldn't be able to have the ability to open the gate from the outside. As a part of this review, our chief building official gave me some quotes from the International Pool Code. And what we're proposing is to keep the six-foot-tall barrier requirement. One of the recommended best practices is if you have horizontal, whether there are stringers or just your fences designed in a way that has horizontal members, they should be at least 45 inches vertically separate apart. That's what that first underlined section says. And then the next recommended change would modify the gate standard. It would break them up between pedestrian gates, utility and service gates, and double doors. So for pedestrian gates, the proposed change is the gate still needs to be self-closing and self-latching. Each gate needs to be equipped to accommodate a locking device. And this is what's usually recommended for pool security. It's where the release mechanism of the gate is less than 54 inches above finished grade measured on the outside of the barrier, the release mechanism shall be located on the pool side of the gate, not accessible to small children. When it comes to utility and service gates, these are like if someone has a gate that's for vehicular access, it's very hard to make those self-closing and self-latching, even if you do, they usually over time come off their hinges. So the recommendation is to, if they're not, if the gates aren't intended for pedestrian use, they need to be closed or locked when not in use. And then we do have some double doors and gates, these are pretty easy to make, self-closing and self-latching, but that International Pool Code, this is basically a quote from there, "Double doors and gates or multiple doors and gates shall have not fewer than one leaf secured in place, and the adjacent leaf shall be secured with a self-closing and self-latching device." So that's the proposed change.
Ryan, if someone has a pool currently and they don't have, it doesn't meet the standard, are they grandfathered in?
They're grandfathered in.
Grandfathered?
And that's how, I mean, the zoning code, any change, if there's something that's non-conforming, they become grandfathered in. But the standard isn't really changing a ton. It's really this underlined section where the release mechanism needs to be that's kind of confusing with the way our code is worded today. Were there any other questions? Development pattern districts, Chapter 1141, when the zoning code was rewritten in 2015, the old code had an industrial zoning district. And when the code was rewritten, there were three pattern districts that were created that mostly cover industrial uses, industrial, light industrial, and suburban business. Industrial and light industrial, the minimum front yard setback is 25 feet. Suburban business, the minimum front yard setback is 35 feet. The old industrial district, the minimum front yard setback was 25 feet, so we're proposing to just add that. I don't think there's any non-conformities in the code today, but just in case people need that extra 10 feet as they develop a property, that's intended to kind of correct that item. One of the last amendments that council passed was the setback requirements for the suburban district for existing structures that were non-conforming. We added a couple sections that allowed those to be considered conforming. We want to add that same language to the suburban center district. Chapter 1143, there's a lot of changes proposed to this chapter. These are our site and environmental standards chapter. We already have a section for what we call land dominium developments. These are basically condominiums where you own some of the land around your unit. I believe Prue Woods is technically a land dominium. David's Retreat is a land dominium, that townhouse development, there's a few others around town. And historically, the way that we've calculated the maximum density for these areas is we look at the zoning district that you're in and we take the maximum density allowed per unit in that district and we tell you, that's the max number of units you can create on this property. We just want to clarify how we calculate that. This is also the chapter that has our access requirements, and I'll get into that, like where your driveways can be, how wide they can be, where your access drives for non-residential uses can be located. And the standards work pretty well, but when you're on a thoroughfare street or an arterial or a collector, the zoning code is kind of arbitrary. We have minimum separation requirements for driveways and alignment requirements, but it doesn't really take into account what's in the street, like medians or lane striping. So we've had instances where a proposed access point will meet the zoning code, but then there's recommendations from the engineering department that would slightly modify where that access point, where they'd prefer the access point be located. So we want to modify how we review those items. So the zoning code today does have a modification of standards section for access management, but this will be a little hard to read. But we're recommending to modify that section to really be more in line with what the zoning code used to say. Because right now, the zoning administrator may permit a modification to the standards of Section 1143 dot 05, access and driveway is subject to the following conditions. A, an applicant can show that the standard will cause a practical difficulty in accordance with the standards found in Section 1153 dot 13 dot 6 dot A, which is our variance section. And B, that an alternative arrangement may be provided that will bring the access as close to conformity as the physical circumstances make possible through the following devices. One, the elimination of multiple curb cuts on individual street frontages of the site. Two, combining access drives with those of adjoining sites. And three, the realignment of driveways to meet the standards found elsewhere in the zoning code. We want to modify that, delete the requirement that you prove a practical difficulty because that's in a lot of instances virtually impossible to meet the variance standards, it's very hard. And we want to modify that section to say, "The access control standards contained in Section 1143 dot 05, access and driveways may be modified and increased or decreased upon recommendation to the zoning administrator by the city engineer or the city engineers Such modifications shall be based upon the following standards," the same first three items, "but then number four, the recording of cross-access easements within adjoining site or adjoining sites to allow for the closure of access points. Number five, the conversion of an access point or access points from full movement into limited movement when recommended by the city engineer, or the reduction in the widths of existing access points." And then this next section was in, it's, the language is modified slightly, but this was in the zoning code before. And that is that Kettering's engineer or the city engineer or the city engineers designee has recommended a modification to the access standards in order to accommodate unique safety or design situations, or if indicated by a traffic impact analysis or study, in such cases, the city engineer or the city engineers designee shall make a report which documents the facts of the case and the rationale for modifying these requirements. That was in the code before. But then, "When approving a modification, the zoning administrator, when working with the city engineer, may impose conditions upon the approval, including but not limited to designating access points to be limited access, requiring modifications to or closures of other access points, and requiring additions or modifications to traffic control devices within the public right-of-way such as medians or lane striping." The most recent example I can think of where the existing section came in handy was when Kroger redid their site. With the language in the code today, we were able to require them to close that median on East Stroop that allowed full movement, full movement access to the site from that access point, kind of in the northwest area of the property, which caused occasionally some problems where people would stop in a turn lane for turning left onto Schroyer from East Stroop in order to turn into the Kroger site. So we want to modify that to give the engineer a little bit more, the city engineer, a little bit more authority in determining what the access requirement should be. Other items to Chapter 1143, we have a lot of site illumination standards, but right now, it doesn't say that those requirements apply to internal lights that are obviously intended to light outdoor areas of the property. This, we do have issues with this from time to time when people put extremely bright lights inside and shine them outdoors and it lights up the entire street and causes glare issues. We want to clarify that if you do that, we'll hold you to the existing exterior light standards that we have in the code. A couple other items, right now, when it comes to lighting, if you have a site with non-conforming lighting and you propose an addition to the building that's 25% or more of the existing footprint of that building, you're required to bring all of the lighting on the property into compliance with today's standards. Light pole heights, uniformity, it can be very hard to do. And also, if you have a property that's been abandoned for six months or more and a new use goes into the site, it triggers full compliance with all the lighting standards that we have today. We're not proposing to eliminate any or all of the compliance requirements, but we're proposing to make it so that if you trigger compliance from either one of these two, whether it's an addition or a new use, you have to bring the site into compliance with a light trespass and fixture type, so you have to install fully cut-off fixtures which on existing light poles and for existing wall packs, and you have to control for light trespass, but you won't be subject to today's uniformity standards or light pole height requirements. Same with new uses that go in after abandonment. Because again, several months ago, we did an analysis of existing light pole heights throughout town, and right now, for office uses, the maximum light pole height is 20 So the 500 buildings next door, those light poles are 28 feet tall. So if they wanted to go out there and swap out the light fixtures and that total amount of illumination is 25% of the lumens on the site, it'll trigger of illumination is 25% of the lumens on the site, it'll trigger full compliance with everything. So they have to cut all the light poles down, make them 20 feet tall, rewire the entire parking lot, because they'd have to also meet our uniformity standards, and it becomes very difficult. Going along with that, we also did some research on more up-to-date uniformity standards for lighting, and we added a couple other options for meeting our uniformity standards based on best practices recommended by the Illuminating Engineering Society. I can't remember the exact name of the organization, but we wanted to bring our code more in line with their recommendations. Also, for feeling station canopies, right now, we allow the area beneath the canopy to have an average foot candle amount of 20-foot candles, which is very bright, and we want to lower that to 15-foot candles. And then for our demolition standards, which is also in Chapter 1143, we just want to clarify what must be removed from a property in the case of the demolition of a principal structure. And really, the only thing that we added to this is that if you're demolishing a principal structure and you have a non-conforming sign, we want you to take that down as well. Chapter 1145, Parking and Loading. These first two items, we talked about at a meeting before. Most of our industrial, or I'm sorry, most of our residential properties around town are in the neighborhood or village pattern districts. And those pattern districts don't permit you to have parking in the front yard at all. So, and your driveway, the driveway is not considered parking. So the driveway needs to deadend into a legal parking space, either in the side of the property or in the rear yard. So if you have, if you have an attached garage and driveway deadends into it, the parking spaces are considered in the side yard in the garage. And the challenge with that is it makes it difficult for people who want to convert attached garages into living spaces, and it makes it difficult for people who want to slightly widen their driveways. And I'll, I have some pictures and a few slides that will explain that a little bit better. And we want to remedy that issue that we've had around town. Another minor item, our code today requires loading spaces on non-residential sites to be clearly marked. Perfectly fine standard. The issue with that is no truck dri, I mean, people park where they can fit on the property. There's no reason to require them to be marked, because even if they are, drivers will park where they can fit and where they can most easily bring stuff into the commercial establishment. So we want to get rid of that standard, because just, we still need, people still need to show us how they're going to load and unload items on the site, but we don't really care if they mark where the trucks are supposed to park or not. Another minor item. For the parking of commercial vehicles on residential properties, we are proposing to apply that same standard to equipment, because equipment can kind of be a loophole, but it's not clearly defined in the code today. So if you have like a forklift or a one of those small backhoes, sometimes they don't meet the definition of commercial vehicle. And we just want to make sure that they, they fall under the same standards. Going back to the driveway widening comment we had before, just a couple examples around, that you could have around town. Here's an existing R2-zoned property. They're permitted to have, based on the lot width, about a 24-foot wide driveway is the maximum driveway width they can have on the property. So it'd be reasonable for someone to come in, if they want to widen the driveway and do that red outline. But our code today would require them to extend that driveway back and create this eight-by-16-foot parking pad next to the house, so that that driveway deadends into a legal parking space. This is an example of a property where they can fit the eight-by-16-foot wide pad. There's a lot of properties that can't. So even a minor driveway widening project, they can't do, and we want to remedy that with this amendment. By permitting residents to add one parking space, as long as they widen the driveway toward the nearest side outline, and they meet the existing driveway width requirements, they would no longer be required to put this pad next to the house. Another item, R2 zoning district. I believe this is the Huber South neighborhood where we have a lot of three-bedroom, one-bathroom houses. People often want that second full bathroom. The easiest way to do that is to convert the existing attached garage into a bathroom and master bedroom. The issue is, if you do that, you now have a driveway that deadends into a non-parking space, so you can't do it without rerouting the driveway into the side yard. And again, a lot of properties don't have room to fit that pad. So this amendment would allow people to convert a driveway, and we worded it in a way that if you, if you have a two-car garage, you can convert the whole two-car garage and have a driveway that deadends into that now living space. The one caveat to that is we want people to carve out about a three-foot wide, like, area between the edge of the house and the driveway for a landscaping bed, because it does look kind of tacky if the pavement just goes up to a new wall of the house. Any questions? Okay. There's a lot of proposed changes to the landscaping and buffer yard section of the code. Most of them are pretty minor. In the buffer yard chapter, for type D and E buffer yards, which are the buffer yards that commercial and industrial uses are required to build next to residential properties, the group A trees are required to be canopy trees, which are, canopy trees are large deciduous trees that get 60 feet tall and 60 feet wide. A group A tree is the same, except it gets 35 feet tall, 35 feet wide. We want to remove the requirement that they have to be canopy trees in those buffer yards, because there's not a lot of trees that, species that meet that requirement. Trees are usually stunted in a buffer yard area. And the current standard requires, basically, risks more monoculture-type buffer yards. We want people to have more variety of trees they can plant in buffer yards to meet that standard. Earlier, when we were talking about Chapter 1137, standards for specific uses, particularly the masonry wall standard that we have, I mentioned that this amendment takes all of those requirements and moves them to the buffer yard section of the code. This next slide will show how we're proposing to do that. So today, the masonry wall standard, this is how it's worded for, I believe this is gas stations. "Today, a finished masonry wall that is six feet in height shall be provided along any property line of such an establishment adjoining a residential use property, excluding multi-unit dwellings located in the town center and neighborhood center pattern districts." And this requirement is in addition to any buffer yard screening or landscaping requirements. And this is spread between several uses in Chapter 1137. To make it simpler, and this is going to be hard to read, you don't have to read it, what we're proposing to do is add a chapter to the landscaping and buffer yard section of the code that basically takes any, any use that has a masonry wall or more substantial fence requirement, we want to add it to one table and specify whether a buffer yard fence or a buffer yard wall is required. And then, on that table, similar to what we do throughout the rest of the code, like buffer yard fence, there's a little number one right here for buffer yard wall, there's a little number two, and there's several uses where there's a little number three on the table. And those notes are basically, uses that are required to have a buffer yard fence are required to meet these standards. And the buffer yard wall standard, people can still build a masonry wall if they want to. But the other option that they have is, they can build a privacy fence meeting the following requirements. The fence has a sound transmission class of at least 26, and the fence is either an earth tone color, or it's a, matches the color of the principal structure. These are, this is basically describing a Simtech fence. If you've been, if you've been to Valley Thrift recently, ever since they built the addition, that fence behind their property, along the edge of the property, that's a Simtech fence. It's not a masonry wall. It looks like one, but it's a more substantial fence that provides sound buffering and visual buffering, and it's just less expensive than a masonry wall, and it accomplishes the same goal. Are there any questions about that? Okay. Oh, and I actually put a picture, I forgot I put a picture right here. That's a, that, that fence, it's not a masonry wall, but it has a sound transmission class of 26, and it's earth tone. So the recommended amendment would permit these in place of required masonry walls. And if you go around town, we have a lot of masonry walls. They're pretty old at this point, so some of them are falling apart, and it becomes very tricky when it comes time to replace them. So we want to give people other, other options. Other minor items for streetscape landscaping, we're adding a requirement that streetscape trees be single trunk or stem, and that's, we've told people that, it's just not listed as a requirement yet, and that they be planted within 10 feet of adjoining sidewalks. That's because these trees are intended to provide shade to sidewalks, and if they're too far back, even when they get big, they won't accomplish that goal. Building foundation landscaping, we're not proposing any major changes here, but today, when you calculate the amount of building foundation landscaping you're required to have, you need to have one group B tree every 30 feet of linear building length. And a group B tree is a tree that gets 20 feet tall and 20 feet wide. And foundation landscaping is required to be within a foundation bed that's five feet wide up against the building. So the group B trees are pretty large for foundation trees. So we're proposing to add a ornamental option to this section, just a smaller, smaller tree. Parking lot landscaping, we're not proposing to change any of the required interior parking lot trees, tree requirements, but in addition to the interior parking lot tree standards, we have a standard in our, in our code where parking lots, anywhere where there's a type A, or B, or C buffer yard required along the parking lot, you're required to have a four-foot tall fence or hedge along the parking lot to screen it. Along the public right of way, you're required to have a two-and-a-half-foot tall hedge or fence or wall. Those standards are fine, but we're proposing to create an exemption from the parking lot screening requirement if you're an industrial use that adjoins another industrial use and you're located within the neighborhood or light industrial pattern district. So if it's, if it's an industrial use next to a house, or next to a commercial, or next to an office, the standard stays the same. But if you're next to another industrial use, this proposal, you wouldn't have to put the parking lot screening in. You'd still have to have the buffer yard, but not the screening. Oh, another item. The way our code's written today, chain link fences are not permit, are only permitted within rear yard areas, no matter what pattern district you're, or that you're in, or what use is on the property. If you go around town, it's not uncommon to have chain link fences in the side yards of industrial uses. So this proposal would allow industrial uses in the neighborhood, industrial and light industrial pattern district, to have chain link fences in the side yard. In addition to the rear yard, they'd still have to be vinyl coated, dark color, but it would introduce a little bit more flexibility for those uses. Another item, and I figured there'd be some discussion on this. Several months ago, the water tower on East David Road, they wanted to put a six-foot tall chain link fence with barbed wire on it, in an area that was technically in the front yard of the property, because there's really not a structure. There's a little building back there, but they wanted it to be a little bit further forward than that, which would match what they have at their other water tower in Farrington, and it would match what is pretty typical for certain uses. So we're proposing to create an exemption where you can have barbed wire, not, but not razor wire, on fences that meet the following requirements. The worst is that the barbed wire is at least six feet above grade, measured from the outside of the fence. The fence is intended to provide security to public water and/or sewer facilities or electrical substations, and the fence is screened from the public right of way and adjoining properties by an eight-foot tall evergreen hedge. If the fence is a wrought iron style security fence, then the hedge is not required. Another item that we might propose to add to this section is that, to create a minimum setback requirement for such a fence from the front property line. And just to show some examples, the water tower in Farrington, six-foot tall chain link fence, barbed wire, has an evergreen hedge in front of most of it. This is not a good example. This does not meet the proposed requirement, but this is the electrical substation on East Dorothy. With the standard that we have proposed, they would be able to put in a vinyl coated fence that has barbed wire, but it would have to be screened from the street and adjoining properties with an eight-foot tall hedge. This is the one, the electric substation on Presidential. So this proposal is really meant to, basically, look at what we have around town and make that acceptable for these types of uses. But the water tower on, on David Road, they had to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals to get a variance, because they wanted to put up a six-foot tall vinyl coated chain link fence that was screened from the road. I don't know if they ever put it in, but they, they had to go to the board to ask for that, and we don't feel like that should be necessary. Any questions about that?
I mean, that makes sense to, you know, somewhat, you know, hardened, you know, infrastructure. And it's pretty much, you know, what we've been seeing has been of a lesser standard.
Yeah. Again, I think that we'll need to draft a set, minimum setback requirement, so it's not right up against the front of the property, but I think the rest of that is pretty reasonable. Another item that we've had some challenges with are our screening requirements for service and storage areas, particularly as they relate to dumpster screens. Right now, non-residential permitted principal uses are required to screen their dumpsters with a six-foot tall masonry wall, similar in style and finish to that of the principal structure. And this proposed amendment would keep that standard in place, but also give the option of having, kind of, similar to the wall that we showed before, a little bit more specific. So a six-foot tall masonry wall is an option. Another, the other option is, "A six-foot tall fence meeting the following specifications: is comprised of fade-resistant materials, is supported by steel reinforced rails and panels, with the posts set at least 32 inches below grade, is earth tone in color or matches the color of the principal structure, and with the exception of gates, is not comprised of wood." Again, that's intended to, the masonry wall requirement, I believe, was created with the, with the zoning code amendment in 2015, because wooden enclosures just don't last. You put them up and they fall apart, they get hit, and then they fall, they fall apart. They get removed and never replaced. So the masonry wall standard was put in place so that they would be more sturdy and they would stay in place longer, which is true. It's met that, it's met that intent. The issue is, they still get hit, and when they get hit, it's hard to find someone who can fix them. So we want to give another option that's a little bit more easy to fix, but still accomplishes, accomplishes the same goal of the enclosures being sturdy and aesthetically pleasing. Another item, we have an existing modification of standards section in our landscaping and buffer yards chapter. This screenshot is the existing code with the proposed changes. Again, this section has the same requirement that applicants need to show that the standard will cause a practical difficulty in accordance with our variance standards, which is very difficult to do. So we wanted to delete that, and add a couple other requirements that, if the zoning administrator is going to permit a substitution or modification of the standards contained in the chapter, they have to show that the property in question includes unique features, such as sensitive environmental areas, substantial grade changes, unique access to a public right of way and/or soil conditions. Number two, the proposed substitution or modification will preserve, not harm, the public safety and welfare. And then, most importantly, this is already in the code today, that an alternative arrangement be provided that will provide a comparable level of protection imposed by the original standard or condition. And this is most useful- And this is most useful for existing sites. We have instances of old properties that developed a long time ago. The buffer yard might be ten or fifteen feet wide, and it's basically a forest today of vegetation as the plants have matured and other volunteer growth has taken over. In cases like that, if those, if those sites are, if the owners of those properties are proposing a project that triggers full compliance, they somehow, the code might technically require them to cut everything down and start all over, which would sometimes diminish what's already there. This amendment would give staff a little bit more authority to approve modifications on a case-by-case basis. Chapter eleven forty-nine, architecture. A lot of these changes that we're proposing deal with industrial uses as well. Our architectural chapter of the code is wonderful. It, it gets really good quality development throughout town. The challenge with it, it doesn't, it doesn't apply super well to industrial buildings, which tend to be much bigger. And they just tend to operate differently from a commercial project. So as an example, we have a blank wall modification requirement in the code where if the principal facade, blank walls can't exceed ten feet in height by twenty feet wide. That works really well on commercial properties, because once you have the cap and the base and the expression line, unless your building is taller than twenty feet, you can meet that standard pretty easily. If you're an industrial property, it's thirty-some feet tall, cap, base, expression line, you need to add another design feature to the side of your building that a lot of the time doesn't even look, it looks kind of out of place to meet the standards. We want to allow industrial uses to have twenty-foot-tall by twenty-foot-wide blank wall areas. Going along with that, and I have some pictures that'll illustrate this a little bit better. Our cap and base standard, caps and bases are required to project from the principal facade by at least an inch. If you're a commercial user, you usually have a stone base or something like that to project, or a shelf. A lot of industrial uses that are tilt-up concrete, they can provide a color change and a line that kind of adorns the tilt-up concrete. But if it doesn't project out an inch, it technically doesn't meet our standard. So we want to allow them to meet the cap and base standard by just a color change. And I have, I have a picture in a second that'll illustrate that a little bit better. And this is, the next item is a little bit more major. Dude. Sorry. Other, other than the industrial pattern district, which is basically the Tenneco site only, and it's only the site where the Tenneco building is. There's a lot of land area to the north of the building and to the west that's in the light industrial pattern district. But other than Tenneco site, we don't allow metal siding, which works, works pretty well. The challenge is, we have some metal buildings around town that people want to add on to, and they want to match what they already have. And they can't do it. And so what we want to propose is an exemption from the, from only the material standard, where you can, you can expand an existing metal building and match what you have, provided the following standards are met. The structure was built legally, the use is industrial. The structure is located within the NLI suburban or suburban business pattern district. With the exception of the finished materials, the addition meets the DAHLBul requirements of our architectural chapter. And if such structure containing the non-conforming metal finished materials includes a design feature such as a brick base, that design feature must be extended across the entirety of the addition. Some pictures here. The first one, dealing with just allowing color changes to meet the cap and base requirement, I've wanted to have shown a familiar building. This building, where the where the base, it's a color change, it looks fine. Doesn't meet our standard of that, had to project by an inch. We don't think that makes sense for industrial uses. Same with the cap. The cap, we would want it to be a color change instead of just the line. But we would, for an industrial use, we'd be okay with it just being a color change. Also, when it comes to the metal buildings that we have, we actually analyzed all of the industrial buildings around town to find out. We only found a couple one-hundred percent metal buildings in the city. There's one on, there's one on Plainfield. Dayton Bag and Burlap has a lot of metal, but there's a why can't I remember words? Split-faced block front. But most of our metal, most of the buildings we have, they have non-conforming metal siding. Like, they have like a metal top. And the bottom is a brick base like this. And this amendment would allow additions to be built on these buildings that match what they have. But it would have to, all the other standards we have would have to be met. And then this is the last item dealing with industrial standards. We have a standard in our code where if you have a flat roof, you're required to have a minimum twelve-inch-tall parapet that surrounds the entire roof on the front. Front sides everywhere. Works great. The challenge is, like I mentioned earlier, we've had some, and this proposed change came about because of the, I don't know if you've been by the Quaker site where they're building the addition right now? Where their conditional use was approved about a year ago. It's a tall building, I believe it's thirty-four feet tall. When they initially came in with their plans, they had one, part of the parapet, at the shortest part, was about six inches tall. And then the roof sloped and it got taller as you went to the south side of the building, if I remember correctly. They had to make the parapet twelve inches tall to meet the code, but there's no rooftop mechanical equipment. And the roof is already hidden with what? Because the building is so tall, you can't even see the roof. So the proposed change for uses like Quaker and other industrial uses in certain pattern districts, it would give staff the ability to make the, allow the parapet wall to be shorter as long as a concealed gutter system is utilized on all principal facades. That as long as a parapet wall is provided that conceals the edge of the roof, no mechanical rooftop equipment is proposed. And should rooftop equipment be added in the future, the screening must meet the requirements of Section eleven forty-nine dot oh-one dot six. Any questions about that? Most of the changes to the sign code are pretty minor, we've talked about these before as well. Right now in our code, if you are a multi-tenant property in the B, in the business or business park zoning district, those uses are permitted to have a building signs equal to one square foot of sign area for every one foot of building frontage. But if you're a single tenant building in the same zoning district, you get one, one-half square foot of sign area, building sign area for every one foot of frontage. We want to make them the same. Another item. I think the internet age and GPS has made temporary signs not as big of an issue as they used to be. They're still out there. We're not proposing to change the maximum size or height requirements for temporary signs. But right now in the zoning code, you're required to get a, if you want to put up a temporary sign, you're permitted to have it up no more than thirty consecutive days, four times a year. And you're required to get a permit that I believe costs fifty dollars for each thirty-day period. We want to make it so if you get a temporary sign permit, it's good for one year. So you could put that sign up four different times, no more than thirty consecutive days. Because I think the code we have now is so expensive that people either, they just don't follow the rules, or they don't put a sign up at all. So we want to change that. Also, permanent, permanent building signs are required to be one foot from the edges of the walls where they're installed. But temporary banners are required to be two feet from the edges, we just want to make those the same. Temporary, temporary ground signs are required to be fifteen feet from the front property line. But permanent ground signs are required to be ten feet from the front property line. We also want to make those the same. So ten feet for both. And then going along with the item I mentioned earlier about our demolition standards in the non-conforming signs section, we want to add a bullet point that requires non-conforming signs to be removed in cases where the principal structure is demolished. Almost done. Chapter eleven fifty-three, procedures and enforcement. We talked about this, I believe we talked about this a while ago. Right now in the zoning code, there's if people apply for permits and get their permit issued, or people apply and get their permit denied, it's pretty clear what applicants have to do, when it expires, it's, it's pretty clear. But there's nothing in the code about if someone applies for permits and staff sends comments back to them, and then they just never respond. So we just want to add a section that we can expire those permits in a hundred eighty days after we give comments. There's, there's language included in the proposal that would allow us to extend that timeline if people are working with us, but we just want to be able to clean up the, our queues that we have of old permit applications. When it comes to notification and service requirements for notices of violation, our property maintenance inspectors help us enforce a lot of the zoning code, but the notification requirements in the property maintenance code and the zoning code are different. So we want to make them the same. Get rid of some confusion. And then, I didn't know how to word this, but in our non-conformity chapter, it's best just to look at how the code is written today. We have two sections, one of which is titled continuance, and another of which is titled conditions. Which if you read them, it looks like the old section of the code that was titled right to continue was split into two sections. And they don't, the ones we have in our code today, it's really confusing what they mean. So we just want to add the right to continue section back into the code, so it's more clear. Non-conforming structures. As it relates to architecture, the way our code is written today, if you modify ten percent of a principal facade, it triggers full compliance with that entire facade for all of our architectural standards, which most of the standards aren't super hard to meet, but our minimum transparency requirement can be very tricky. So we want to increase the amount that you have to do to trigger the full compliance with our minimum transparency standards to fifty percent of the principal facade. Going along with that, this item came about, we found a way to interpret the code to not trigger full compliance with the architectural requirements, but we want to, if you're building an addition onto an existing structure, it's not that hard to trigger full compliance with our architectural standards for the existing building. Again, usually not super hard to meet, but issues come up if you're building an addition. And sorry, something popped up on my screen. Issues have come up if you're building an addition, particularly onto an industrial, onto an industrial building. And it triggers full compliance with the architectural standards. A lot of our industrial buildings are, they might not be metal, but a lot of them are smooth CMU, also not permitted. So if you trigger full compliance, you could hypothetically have to put like an heap of skin on the entire building. We want to make it so if you're building an addition, the addition needs to comply with today's standards. But as long as you're not worsening any non-conformities, you don't have to do it for the entire structure. Going along with an earlier comment when it came to our non-conformer, non-conforming lighting standards, we established this section of the code titled modification of standards for non-conforming sites a couple of years ago. Initially, it applied mostly to landscaping, screening, and screening standards and dimension requirements for parking lot, for spaces and drive aisles. We want to expand that to a couple other items. Light pole heights is one. And the other is dumpster enclosure locations. Because there's a, it's not super common, but there's a few properties around town where, one of them is where Deuce shirts used to be over at the corner of, I believe, Bigger and Andrew. There's not a single spot on that property to put a dumpster enclosure that's not in the front or street side yard. It's all front, but, and we found ways to allow people to put enclosures in. We just make them attach it to the building somehow, which is not super hard to do. But it's cumbersome. People shouldn't be required to do that. So we want to allow, if you have a non-conforming, if you have a non-conforming site, we want to be able to approve dumpster enclosures in areas where they wouldn't be permitted otherwise. The definition changes, and I'll, I'll finally be done. Most of these are cleaning up just things in the code that are missing. We've had issues where we don't have a clear, we have no definitions for automobile detailing uses. And it's pretty common for people to want to put a appointment-only detailing use in a small industrial space, but we don't know what category to fit them in. So this amendment will define automobile detailing and automobile washing. Adds definition of bank, adds definition of concealed gutter. Adds definition of discount store. We, today, we don't have a definition for chain link privacy and non-privacy fences, so we wanted to find what those all mean. Particularly privacy and non-privacy fences, because we've had some, it's not super common, but occasionally people will come in and wanting to put up a picket fence, but it's effectively a privacy fence, there's like a centimeter gap between the pickets. And without a definition, it's unclear how wide of a space you need to have. So we want to create those definitions. Want to create a definition for accessory dwelling unit. Financial institution equipment, going along with the commercial vehicle section. A definition of grocery store, definition of home improvement store. Going along with the definitions of bank and financial institution, we want to add a definition of ITM, which I didn't know was a thing until recently, which is an interactive teller machine. Have you, have you seen those before?
Yeah, right back Credit Union over at Cornerstone.
Oh, is that? Well, yeah, because there's been, there's been
One of them, there's a regular ATM on the building, and then there's the next one out. You can use it as an ATM, or you can use it as an interactive teller machine.
So advanced, I've never used one before. But, but there's been some case law where cities have run into issues where they didn't define these. And someone wanted to build a standalone one on a property where a bank would be perfectly fine, but they might not want like an ATM type use on the property by itself. But since they didn't define them, an ITM is, it's a bank. It meets the same definition, so we need, you have to define that item. Light trespass, doesn't have a definition, we wanted to add a definition of bicycle parking space. Add a definition of drive-through restaurant. The main reason we want to add a definition of bicycle parking space is to make it clear that right now our code requires a certain amount of bicycle parking. But it, since we don't define it, if someone wanted to have just indoor bicycle parking, it wouldn't meet our code. Like if you have an apartment and you want to have like lockers inside for people, for your residents to use, nope, you got to put a bike rack outside. So that definition is intended to allow us to approve stuff like that. Couple other definitions, short-term rental, short-term rental guest, small box discount store, transient person. And that goes along with, we have to modify, for for creating our definitions of short-term rental, we have to modify our definitions of hotel and motel. And as a part of that, we have to add a definition of transient person. Fun stuff. Couple minor modifications, convenience store. Most codes I've looked at have a minimum and maximum floor area for these uses. We want to modify the definition of duplex. Because we've had, it hasn't come up a lot, but we've had instances, instances where people want to build an addition onto their house. And a duplex would be permitted on the property. But they want to build an addition that has like a full bath, bedroom, kitchenette. And they could build a duplex on that same property. But our definition requires duplexes to be separated by an unpierced wall. So they, we've told people, you have to put, you can't have a door in between these two units. Even though you could hypothetically build a duplex on the same property. If that makes sense, we want to fix that issue. As a part of our changes to the shed standards, we need to modify the definition of enclosed roof accessory structure. We need to modify the definitions of hotel and motel. Restaurant, that goes along. We need to modify the definitions of hotel and motel, restaurant, that goes along with the neighborhood business district. Going along with the shed changes, we need to change the definition of that. And there's a proposed modification to woodland. Minor change to the definition of building frontage as it relates to signs. And that's it. There's a couple other changes throughout the code. I really went over just the ones that are more substantial. Are there any... I'd be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Any questions? Lot to digest.
There was a lot of work.
Yeah.
That's for sure.
We've been working on it for a while. On Friday, when I sent the staff report out, it's like a four hundred page. I sent the whole zone...
Four hundred and fifteen pages.
So I was like, got to give more time to review this. And we have more changes in the works, but we'll bring those back later. But if there's any comments or questions, let me know.
Well, I think the changes are making it easier for people to improve their properties rather than roadblocks that maybe don't make a lot of sense. So I think it's changing...
That's the goal.
And far more understandable. You clarify a lot.
Yeah.
Well, every time Ryan's phone rings and he's like, dang, that could be clearer, then it gets put on his to-do list to follow up on.
It does. It does.
No, I mean, and that's...
And that's good.
It's a benefit for staff, and it's obviously a benefit for residences, Ken had said. So just since we're live here, typically we aren't live, we come back assuming at the next regularly scheduled meeting, which at this point would be...
August 4th. The staff recommendation is that the planning commission continue the case until the August 4th, 2025 meeting, scheduled at 7:00 PM and located within city council chambers at 3600 Schreuer Road, 45429.
Nice. So assuming we approve it then, when would council see it? And then do they have multiple readings?
Yeah, they're... I had a timeline written here.
Just wanting to let all of our developers and homeowners who are looking to improve their properties when the new requirements could potentially be in place. And not only even when they approve it, then is it like ninety days after that or something?
The timeline that I have, assuming the recommendation of approval is sent at August 4th, the ordinance would be effective October 8th.
Okay.
And that requires the council certification, which would be August 12th, the council public hearing, which would be August 26th, the first reading, which would be September 9th, and then the second reading, which would be the September 23rd, assuming it passes and it's effective fifteen days later, unless people launch a referendum to...
Good to know. All right. Any other questions, comments regarding the zoning text amendments? If not, do we... So I'm assuming when we opened this up, we did refer to this as PC 25, so I'm assuming public hearing is open, or did we need to open it, or...
We did not open the public hearing.
Okay, so we did not open it. So then...
We're just going to... The recommendation is to not open the public hearing and continue it.
Well, there you go. Do I have motions to continue this until our next regularly scheduled meeting?
Don't move.
Do I have a second?
Sir.
All right. Call and roll, please.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Lackey?
Yes.
And then Mr. Rethman.
Yes. All right. Item number three on our agenda is audience participation for any items not on the agenda. Is there anyone out in the audience who wishes to address the commission with something not on the agenda this evening? Seeing as that no one is coming forward, moving on. Other business, signing of plaques.
We have none this evening.
Okay. Communications and reports.
The only item I'll mention is that we're working on finding a date for the next open house for the comprehensive plan. So we'll get that information out. The plan is to have it at the same location sometime in early September. So once we actually get the date, I'll bring that information back to the board. I have nothing else.
Planning Commission comments?
I have none.
I have none either. With that, we will adjourn this regularly scheduled meeting of the City of Kettering Planning Commission for Monday, July 21st at 8:25 PM until our next regularly scheduled meeting.